If anybody could stand for the input.
Sheriff Lord, please help guide this council to make the widest and best decisions they can for the town of Maryville and the surrounding area. Lord, keep under your watch our employees, our police department, and our residents of the town. In your name we pray. Come in.
Amen.
May it stand.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any amendments?
No.
Have an approval of minutes as presented for the regular meeting on May 13.
Approved.
A special call meeting on May 29, 2019.
Same.
Okay, approval of the financial statement comparing actual versus budget for May 2019. Motion.
Second.
Did everybody agree? Yes. Okay. Mary, we have two candidates with us tonight. Would you like to speak?
I'm supposed to be here next month. I kind of moved up ahead.
It's all right.
I don't do very well with my calendar. Yeah, I'll need to be very pretty. I think most of you know where I stand because I've met with each one of y'all. But I'm D. W. Carey, running for district representative in District 32. I'm a Christian. I'm a husband. I'm a dad. I'm a granddad. I'm a small business owner. Of course, I'm pro-life. I think marriage should be between a man and a wife. And I never thought that we'd have to vote on those issues, but we will. I will in my first term. And also, I'm a small businessman. I've been in and around government all my life. My two brothers were married over from 1978 to 1993. They both died very young in office. But I was appointed mayor of Pottent because I couldn't handle the mayor job. And I had three years left on my term. I had a company called Teachers' Pet. A lot of you know who it is. It got big enough to where I couldn't do both. But I've written grants. I'd like for y'all to come see the two parks. I've talked to you and a couple of y'all about what we have in Oakland. And I'd love to have y'all come look at them. And also, I'd love to be, I'm going to be a heck of a lot more aggressive in getting money to our district. I think we can do a lot better than I'm doing here. And a couple of things that are really special to me is small businesses. You know, we the job creators, and it's so hard, but I could give y'all instances of going through pure hell to try to get a license or a, there's so many regulations and red tape. I want to cut a lot of that out, and that's going to be one of my first things. Teachers, you know, y'all got a pay raise. My wife is a teacher. My daughter is a teacher now. And I see what teachers spend in my stores. And you know, I think that teachers ought to get maybe every other year or every year till they get up to the national average. We're about, what, 30th in the state? I mean, the country. And I think that needs to be addressed. And being a victim of domestic abuse, I've looked at the laws. I think they're terrible. With three women are killed in this country every day by either a husband or a boyfriend. There's some issues you need to tend to. And that's going to be one of my main goals. But I've got a lot on my plate, and I've got a passion for small towns. I know what y'all go through. I've been there, done that. It's tough. And I can assure you, I'll be here, and I'll have, if I'm not going to be here once a month, I'll have a representative meet you in the little town. You know, they may do that now. I don't do it, but I will do it. But I want you girls to come and look at that park.
Okay.
We'll try to find y'all some money. Any questions? beige? Sure? I'm a Republican now, Terry. That's the Lakers.
You got my thought of it just for that.
Anyway, thank y'all for having me, and I will stick around.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Sheriff.
Mr. John, oh, back there.
Yes, I'd love to speak for just a couple of minutes. I'll just give you a couple of minutes. Dewey, he can speak for two hours on this subject, so I'm not going to do that to y'all. I've got a little information to pass around if I'd like to. I'm John Gott, and I'm a candidate for sheriff. I grew up out on the east side of the parish, and out in Dry Creek, in the suburbs, not in downtown Dry Creek, kind of the suburbs. But I grew up on a farm out there where it was my house and my grandparents' house. And so, I grew up with my dad, who was a construction worker, and my grandfather, who was a retired construction worker. And me being the only boy on the farm, and we was running cows, so I never run out of something to do because my dad and my grandfather both believed in work all the time. So, that's where I started. I've got 33 years of law enforcement experience. The last 10 years as police chief in DeRidder. And I'm proud of some of the things that we've accomplished during the time that I was police chief there in DeRidder. We, I worked 29 years for the city of DeRidder. And before I was appointed chief, I kind of really wasn't pleased with the way that the police department was going. I didn't feel like we were being a, being a part of our community and doing what we should be doing. So, I'd made a promise to myself, if at some point in time if I was able to make some changes, I was going to do that. And that's exactly what we did with the police department. During a lot of these changes, we had, there was a couple of things that was kind of going on that was kind of against us. One of them was we weren't able to compete with the rest of Louisiana's for local office. We weren't very competitive. We train officers, and like y'all have the same issues here, I'm sure, and everybody else does, where you get an officer trained, and they would go somewhere else to better themselves. Nobody can blame them. I would help them to do that, to better them, and their lives and better their families. But that was an issue that we had going on also. So, some of the things to be short of, some of the things that we did at the police department, we adjusted our policies and changed our policies, the way we did things, the way we looked at people, the way we, the way we looked at our community, the way we looked at folks on the call and their issues that they had, so we could try and focus a little bit more on the root of the problem as opposed to just focusing on the rest in itself. So, we could solve the issues such as Mr. Dewey was talking about with domestic violence issues and things. You've got to go back to that, to that root of that problem, change that, and fix the problem, and do that. So, that's kind of the insight that we started taking a look at and making some changes. Some of the other changes that we were looking at was the business end of the deal. Looking at our budgets, the way we were spending money, the way we were, the way we looked at man-hours, the way we charged off for our work, those types of things. To try to figure out where waste was coming into play. Man-hours are very expensive, so when you waste man-hours, you're wasting a lot of money. So, we started organizing that and getting a grip on that and teaching ourselves how to better help each other so we didn't waste those man-hours and wasting overtime and so on and so forth and undue spending. We got a grip on that, and as a result of that, and I'm trying to be fast here, so I'll keep y'all updated. As a result of some of those changes, we were able to address the pay issues at the police department. And we built a pay scale for our police department where our police officers could take a look at, and where they actually have a form that they can look at. So, you know, I've been here for 10 years, and I'm a corporal. This is what I'm making. Well, I'm getting a step increase next year, the year after. This is what I'm going to be making, and you know, if I get promoted, and so on and so forth. So, that's an actual pay scale that they had the first time in the history of the DeRidder Police Department to have something like that. And it's a very manageable form now. To give you an idea on the differences in pay that we went to is we went from, we were paying an officer entry level, officer was $12 an hour. We went from that to $16 an hour at an entry level. That's just the entry level, just to give you an idea what the, what the pay increases were. And it kind of went back and forth as it went up the ladder. But we did that, staying inside of our budget. We also added services. We added daycare. We added community resource, uh, community, uh, family services. I'll try to get it out here in a minute. School resource officer, and also animal control. So, we added these divisions to our department along with those raises and never went outside of our budget. That was just a better management of our monies and of our time and, you know, holding people accountable for their work, that type of stuff. So, that's, that's on that end. On the, on the other changes that we were making to get inside and work with our community, at the end run, in 2017, 2017-2018 year, the Borghard Parish Chamber of Commerce recognized the DeRidder Police Department as Nonprofit Organization of the Year. And that, to me, was outstanding. That spoke for our, our officers in our department, that they're working with the community and doing what they need to be, doing what needs to be done and helping our community because the Chamber of Commerce is built up of men, women, business owners throughout Borghard Parish, and they're the ones that voted and did that. And I'd never heard of a police department being recognized or something like that. So, I'm very proud of that accomplishment. So, that's kind of the insight that I want to bring up to the sheriff's office. I'm going to speed up here in just a minute. I'm going to make those types of changes within the sheriff's office so we can stretch our taxpayers' monies, so we can add more services, more patrol officers, and do more things and still be within our budget without taxing us. And I'm included as a taxpayer, you and me and everybody else. And if I can save, if I can save the town of Maryville money, I'm going to save the town of Maryville money because that's, I believe that's part of our responsibility to do that. I'm going to incorporate services as part of it. I want to incorporate all the investigative units within the parish. And right now, I don't believe that the town of Maryville has an investigative unit, but if they, if they would like to throw an officer in the mix that's found they can't, that's found too won't need to. But the city of DeRidder does. They have some investigators. They also have Narcotics Task Force and Borghard Parish Sheriff's Office Investigators. We're going to include them in a group along with the District Attorney's Office so we can investigate crime throughout the parish and everybody working together. I want to do the same thing with E-911 and dispatchers. So, we have one central dispatch location with everybody working together because when you put everybody together, you pull all your resources. It works more efficiently and more effectively. And we've found that in everything that we've done. I want to, we talk about, people talk about substations and things and want substations to get deputies out in different areas of the parish. Substations, I'll tell you what they are. They're a building for convenience, or convenience for the deputy, convenience for the public. But a substation is really just a building is what it is. My plans are for the west side of the parish is I want to partner with you guys. I want to partner with the town of Maryville so we can either help pay for administrative personnel over here or send personnel over here to work to help y'all so people on the west side can conduct business with the sheriff's office without having to drive all the way to DeRidder to do it. And I'm going to station officers over here, deputies over here, working with the police department. We're going to bring some equipment over here with us, and if we can partner with the police department here so we can help those guys and they can help us, we're working with each other here. So, we always have sheriff's department presence working here in the, in the town of Maryville or in this whole western side of Borghard Parish and do that hopefully without building buildings if we don't need to. I'd rather invest that money in people as opposed to a building. One other main thing that's going to really affect everybody in the parish is our parish jail is in disarray because of its age, and it just needs, it needs a lot of care and maintenance, and it's too small to, to house the inmates that we have for Borghard Parish. The police jury is spending about a half million dollars a year just to house female inmates outside of the parish and other parishes because there's not enough room here. So, we got to address that. That's a big concern with, with the taxpayers here in Borghard Parish because we have to take care of our own people. And I don't like sending money outside of our parish. I'd rather spend that money here in our parish. So, my answer to that is again, not building a new facility that's going to cost us millions of dollars to do. I want to go down to Phelps Prison there just on the south end of the parish. It's predominantly vacant over there. I was out there the other day. They have, always had a workforce out there that does a VOTAC for state inmates to allow them to, like a work release program, teaches them plumbing and piping and welding. But they only use about a third of the facility. So, I've already spoke to them. I spoke with several state legislators. I know we're going to have some new, new folks in Baton Rouge too, and that I know that I can work with. And I want to sign a long-term lease with the state to take that facility and be able to use that as a primary part of our parish jail. And that allows our sheriff's office to grow. We don't have to spend adding millions of dollars to build a new facility because it's already there, and we can grow our department. And I have probably talked way longer than I need to. So, if y'all have any questions or concerns or whatever, please let me know. If you want to ask here in the open forum, I would be more than glad to answer anything you've got. Or you'll pass those around my cell phone number or something like that. They'll give me a call, and we can visit. And thank y'all very much for letting me come to speak to y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. The only thing is, I don't know if everybody's aware, we do have, we have, we go on the second and the last Monday of the month at 9:00. So, during the summer, we're going the second Monday and the last Monday at 9:00 at the United Methodist Church. It's open to all the residents in Maryville, all the senior residents in Maryville.
Okay. Now, we have old business, Weaver Street. We talked about maybe renewing the street. Last meeting, we were talking about maybe getting 911 out here to see what will be the best for those residents. Sarah, did you talk to her?
I haven't talked about that yet, but I'm sure she can do it. Take a look. He's like, he's something else than not facing the road. So, it doesn't make any sense.
Well, it came some years and years ago when that Weaver Street went all the way through before the housing, the research and all this, before the housing project ever went in, that, those two houses over there, they had a little lane that came to Weaver Street. That's where the mailbox was, and that's why they're on the Weaver Street. But they're really facing that street now. I, my suggestion would be is turn it over to Sarah and let her get a hold of 911, see what their recommendation is, what they think is the best for those residents and what would be best for them, for their response, people and everything like that. And she brings it back to us and brings that information to us at a later date.
Well, don't the state own that move? Because when they built them, that housing authority over there, they paid to have that road, a road built through there. So, if the state owns it, I don't see how it can be closed down just, just first, you know, call somebody who owns it.
We're already going through that issue though.
Yeah, I know. But I understand.
We're trying to rename it or...
I understand what you're saying, but I'm saying that if it was done ill-legal, I don't want nothing to do with it.
So, what's your suggestion, Sarah?
My suggestion is we turn it over to Sarah. Let her contact 911. She has contacts with it and everything like that and see what the best thing that we can do for response of any emergency vehicle as far as the name of the street. Because whether we leave it Weaver or not, we all agree that we're going to go east Weaver and west Weaver. So, we will have to contact the same number of agencies, the same number of people and everything like that. We call it east or west. So, if we're going to do that, if 911 feels like it's better, GPS shows it up, it's packed in about half the time anyway.
And the street signs have Weaver.
Right, and it's only one street sign. Well, there's two. But it's not a big, it's not a big deal as far as residents having to change addresses and everything because there's no houses. Your house is on, their house is on her, you know, I looked that up to make sure that the, that the Housing Authority Office was not listed on Weaver because that could be another complication, but if not, it's just going to get on her and her goes off of Weaver. Or if the GPS tells you that that's that tree, it goes off that. So, hurts if nothing touches those houses. Touches those two houses, back there, no question.
So, everybody's in agreement for Sarah to check in with 911 and see what the...
Yeah, let's put it to a motion. I just make, I just make a motion that we turn it over to sellers, let her contact 911, get their suggestions, see what's going on.
So, don't want to table people next to us?
And if you want me to, I'll, Sarah, I'll research that and see if it belongs to the state or whoever belongs to it.
Well, I'm already talking with the guy from the state.
Shows up on the map.
And I'm not the only one that's talked to it.
Okay. But we'll go from there. What do you think, guys? Is that okay with you?
Is that all right with you, Sarah? We'll table it.
I think, I'm just kidding.
And that way you maybe could get the state guy to...
That's fine.
To the main, you know? Okay.
I'm making a motion to table it.
I'll say it.
All right. Next on old business is speed bumps.
Do a layover.
Can I talk to this then?
Okay.
Do I?
You want to make a comment?
Yes, Sarah.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to put this to the desk. And the recent ideas that I mentioned, there's people walking down the streets, there's kids playing. I had nine today playing out there. And the reason the speed bumps look like they do, they're not beat down yet. And somebody's driving, complaining and about speed bumps because y'all all have children and grandchildren. And what's even more important, children flies or somebody's slowing down a few minutes through, those speed bumps. But I was on a fast date two years ago with those speed bumps. You, they speed by there, you just don't even know how fast they speed by. You'd have to sit in my porch and watch it. I had it near accident there with a guy running by with me and Sharon talking.
Yeah. I would see them stopping by my house, Paige.
Yep. And the speed bumps is the proof of that, that that is a safe place for children and neighborhood is speed bumps, that more children are safer and not killed if they have speed bumps in neighborhoods. But I was wanting to have it put down, nobody else but me. I had stayed because it's very dangerous there. And y'all know, all you got grandchildren, you have either grandchildren, have children, you know, have kids.
I'd like to have two or three.
And probably 80% efficient, they have, you know, speeders used to go by. You still got some blind people that don't need to go down and walk. But I'll say 80% is healthy. And the sheriff's farm, I mean, the police farm, they like fishing. They can't catch them all. They patrol it, you know?
They know what they're having. They know what is happening.
So, I like to say they do work.
And there's two ways out that way. They don't have to come down the road. They can go back the other way. That's what I'm saying. There's two ways out that way.
I don't like being talking to myself.
I don't even, you can put one way or another.
I'd be glad if you just go over.
I go over two of them. The same grandchildren's line, your grandkids, your kids, anybody else's kids, all over. But to save a life, it matters. A children's life matters.
If it'll happen, it's going to happen. A mailbox got run over right down the street because a girl was in a hurry and wasn't paying her attention. So, if it happens, it's going to happen sooner or later. There's going to be your kids, mine, and hers.
And how come white there is and not their grandchildren? You know what I mean? Right there, we're being sought out because I'm trying to take care of children's kids, people walking, neighbors, you know? I don't understand.
I would say they come speed on our roads since y'all have...
Sure, sure. They're going to speed.
We put, we did put up a sign for children's lines. We're going to see how that goes.
Yes, they will.
And I'll open that up to any of the community. If you live in an area where there's a kids' plan and there's not a children's plan sign and a speed sign, please get ahold of me and let me know because we're trying to post them and everything. We're trying to put them up everywhere we can so Robert, his crew, somebody can say, well, I didn't know how fast it was. I didn't know what the speed limit is. So, we're, we're working slowly, but we're trying to get them, trying to get them put up all over town.
Do you have any kind of, that don't affect me?
And they are, they're legal height. They just haven't been beat down.
Because that's what we was waiting for you to chip in rather than make sure that they were legal height.
Yeah, they're fine. And there's not 4,000 cars that go over there at the speed limit below 30 miles an hour. So, they're, they're okay. They're okay.
Sarah, do you have anything to add?
Sheila.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think on, I think by state law, on city streets, unless it's marked, it, the speed limit is, is supposed to be 25 miles an hour.
Oh. And you said it's marked it?
What I'm saying is that the laws go into it after, after 30 miles an hour, then the speed bumps should go a big question. But if it's below 30 miles an hour, then I would be glad.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, that they're coming in.
I don't know that we...
Well, we've had on their potential, we've said he has been checking, someone can find them standing.
He's going to check on the standards, and I checked on the primary county business.
Yeah, because we do have people complaining about...
Yeah.
All right.
So, I don't, I don't think, I don't think there's, there's no business. There's no business. They stand as, as they are.
All right. Now, we're on to new business. Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. For new business, we have police personnel. Robert, you want to speak?
Tomorrow will be off, Franger's last day here. I'm going to put Ty in for full-time because of what time he's been here to get his shoulder locked. And I think he would be a good one for the town of Maryville. So, if he's not afraid to get out there and do his job.
Make a motion?
Motion.
I'll say it.
Then have him on full-time.
Can y'all make a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
I...
You can tell me she's late, it's not here.
Yeah. Those are the doughnuts on here. That's what we eat up here from doughnut shop.
You're not, can you handle that? There are decent boats right there. Okay, we have down in public participation. Anybody have anything they want to say, announce?
I do.
Uh-oh. Go ahead.
It's about the speed bump issue and signs and everything. I live off of, right there, right next to the postbox. I think that's called Franger Street that turns into Oldfield Road. And I think a lot of you are aware that there's a lot of people that likes to go down that road like it's the eighty-five hundred, all the time. And I, there's, there's a couple, especially those kids that live on that road, and put in mind, that a speed bump would help over there. But I think my wife has asked for it before and it got turned down.
On Franger Street, you want it?
That's going down. There's a lot of people that likes to use that road like it's the eighty-five when you're going fifty and sixty. I could sit on my back porch and sit there and watch them all day. And I think it would be, it would help a lot if y'all would put, if we could have a speed bump put there or something. I, because honestly, I don't think the sign is going to do it. People are going to just run that stop sign. I mean, they're going to, they're going to do it regardless. There's probably a couple of other roads here in town that would do it.
My suggestion would be if they cool the immediate neighborhood, they come back to the request.
I love how long that can last because you have 78 years.
Yeah. That's the only problem you're going to have. They might take orders.
Yeah, and they can run there. Oh, yeah, they run there all the time.
If you want to, one day just come get you one of those things instead of right by your house, and you never want to. About that.
Take one on the dumb run, just park at your front yard.
Some of them don't care. There's some that, you know, that one they don't care. That's all I wanted to add.
Sir, is there signage there?
There's speed limit signs on the road. I think it's 30 or 35.
35.
Thirty-five.
But you probably need to put it further back before it gets to your street.
Because it's right at the stop sign.
Well, he lives on one ten in Fraser, right there on the corner.
Yeah, I know where he lives. I know where he lives. But that's what I'm saying, because it's you, and then you're talking about...
There's an elderly couple there, and they shouldn't lie behind me there. And it's plenty of people. I mean, they like to go across, across and across, from over there, they like to go across, and they go both ways.
I just don't want them on east. Put it on east. I don't want speed bumps on east.
No, I will, I will look at the signage and everything and see if we can back it off, or what we can do, and then go through the proper channels and bring it back before the council and stuff like that.
I'm not bad at mistaken, that signage up there is almost like you can't...
Okay. Would you live right at the corner?
Yes, sir, right there.
So we'll back it up.
See right there beside. Watching my whole day long.
Give me a week or something.
Okay, well, the rest of Oldfield is kind of a speed bump on its own.
Does anybody else have anything to add?
Sheila, Catherine's got her vacation Bible school going on now. Everybody wants to take their grandkids down there and get rid of them for a few hours. Going on eight thirty, five thirty to eight forty-five through thirty-nine. And First Baptist Church is next week.
Yes. I don't know if council's aware of it, but we have the bravest woman in the United States, my father was an athlete, sitting in this room. That's Maryville. Four grandkids all the way to Georgia.
Very brave.
Trip coming home was faster than going up, wasn't it?
And when it's first baptized?
That's next week. Monday through Wednesday, five thirty to eight.
Anything else? I'd like to thank everybody that come out and both are candidates. Wish y'all good luck.
Wish the fathers happy Father's Day.
And Happy Father's Day, Father's Father, yes. So there's nothing else? Make a motion to adjourn.
Happy Father's Day.